Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's public hearing. Before we get started, please turn off any cell phones or other electronic devices to avoid any interruptions. If anyone interested in planning on presenting testimony, please sign up the sheet in the back hearing room. Anyone who wants an opportunity tonight to speak will have the time to do so. Please step up to the podium when it's your turn and make sure you clearly identify yourself for the record before you begin your testimony. We request that you please keep your testimony focused on the relevant issues and facts for each application. Please remember, these hearings are to allow for members of the public to speak on issues related to land use applications, not to air grievances about each other or your neighbors. We will not tolerate or allow testimony that is hateful in nature and will stop your testimony if it delves into a statement on other people's character. Okay, tonight is Wednesday, March the 12th. The time is six o'clock, the time set for the public hearing. All three commissioners are present. Mr. Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, we will start off by, we need to get a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I've taken the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our first item for up for consideration is Application 202402615-VAC. I will open that public hearing on that application. We will first hear from our staff. Amelia Haynes, give us your report. Go ahead.
Chairman and Commissioners, Project Number 202402615-VAC is a vacation of a platnot relating to the building envelope of a lot in the Avamoor planned community. The property is located at 18282 North McQuarrie Way and contains approximately 1.05 acres in the planned community district. The surrounding property is mostly open space and residential lots contained in the Avamoor planned community. The property is relatively close to the Boise County boundary, with Eagle City limits being close by having annexed a portion of Avamoor. The applicant is proposing to build a shed over an existing concrete pad, which was previously a bocce court and is located in the rear yard. The lot has a 70-foot setback marked on the plat, likely for slope and visual purposes. The engineer has determined a hillside development application is not required for the construction, but the issue remains that there is a platnot restricting the building in that area. Seventy-foot setback is not associated with any utility or drainage easement, but a marked building envelope on the plat. In order to construct the proposed shed, a vacation is needed. The application was transmitted to agencies and neighbors within 300 feet, along with the city and mayor of Eagle. No comments in opposition were received. Staff concludes that the project complies with Ada County and State Code and recommends approval of the project. This presentation will be known as Exhibit Number 27, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions from the board? Okay, no questions. Thank you. Okay, I have, is James Gervais here?
He's online. One moment, please.
Okay, could you get him online?
He should be able to speak now.
Mr. Gervais, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you've got, you've got the time. Go ahead if you'd like to make a presentation.
I don't have any kind of visual presentation. It's just the, the main thing is I'd like the vacation of the plat note removed so that I can construct the accessory building, which will be a combination greenhouse and storage shed for gardening purposes.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Gervais? Okay, hearing done. Thank you. All right, I have Royce Napolitano.
They're also online.
Could you put them online then?
Yes, my name is Royce Napolitino from Edmonds, Washington, but today I'm here to speak on the second item of business on your new business agenda. That's the 202400859. So I could, I can hold for that, please.
Oh, okay. I had you down here for this one, but that's okay. Okay, I have no one else that is, I'm getting a sheet now. Is there somebody else wishes to speak on this one? Okay, are there any, I'm getting the, the people who signed up now. Are there others that wish to speak on this application?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Can you hear, can, you can't hear us, or can you hear us now?
Maybe we could get IT to raise the mics a little.
Okay, well, we'll, I don't want to yell, but we'll try to make sure you can hear us. Okay, I don't have anybody else scheduled to speak on this application unless there's someone in the audience that wishes to. Hearing none. Is there any documents needed to be added to the record?
There are not.
Okay, I will close the public hearing on Application 202402615-VAC. The application being, are the app, being closed. It's now up to the board. Is there any questions or discussions? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, it appears to me after reviewing the record and the, there's no opposition, there was no printed opposition either staff, correct?
There were not.
Based on that and the application as I view it, I'm ready to make a motion if that's appropriate.
Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve Application 202402615-VAC, Jim Gervais, based on the findings and fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and the testimony we've heard this evening.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next we will have up for consideration, Application, and I will open the public hearing on Application 202401978 SPR, Wood Forest Heights subdivision. I understand this one has been requested to be tabled. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I will accept a motion to table the application.
I'll move to table Application Number 202401978-S-PR, Wood Forest Heights subdivision to April 9th, 2025.
I second the motion.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Motion is to table till the 20, till the 9th of April 2025. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, I will now open the public hearing on our next application, which is Application 202400859-CUMSP, Whitney Bonnet. The hearing being opened, is there, we will hear from our staff. Go ahead, Brent.
Okay, I'm just having a little technical difficulty here. Dear Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Project Number 202400859-CUMSP-V is a conditional use master site plan and variance required setbacks for a commercial kennel and animal boarding facility with outside runs. The property is generally located southeast of downtown Cuna, near the intersection of Cunamora Road and Eagle Road. The property is located at the corner of Cunamora Road and Retriever Run Lane and contains 41.79 acres in the rural preservation district. The kennel facility is located towards the northwest portion of the property and consists of approximately 25,817 square feet and will include boarding kennels, daycare space, offices, grooming, play areas, cat condos, indoor training, play areas, storage, and employee break room. The facility will have approximately 20 employees. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. All the animals will be housed indoors. At maximum capacity, the facility could house up to 200 animals. The area surrounding the proposed kennel is fairly open as shown on the Google Street View map images. The closest residence is the Young Residence, which is approximately 250 feet to the east of the site. And if you look at the photos here, I have on the south photo and then the east photo, the driveway for the facility will be the kind of located where this gate, current gate is. This is kind of where the entrance to the facility would be, kind of where that gate is there. The property is in Cuna's area of impact and the adopted future land use map designates the site agriculture. The kennel is in compliance with the comprehensive plan as the kennel is on a small portion of the property and the remaining portion of the property can still be used for farming or raising of livestock. As part of the master site plan, the applicant has submitted a landscape and parking plan. The applicant plans to install four berms that are four feet tall in front of the facility along Cunamora Road. The landscaping will consist of a variety of plants from ground cover, shrubs, evergreens, and shade trees. Also, the applicant has requested for the surface of the parking lot to be a dustless material instead of asphalt or concrete. As condition, the county engineer will need to approve of the all-weather dustless material for the parking area. The applicant is requesting a variance for setbacks associated with the animal boarding and outside runs, specifically for the animal boarding and outside runs where the animals are housed to be within 600 feet of a property line. The applicant stated in their detailed letter that they seek to locate the facility within 400 feet from the rear, 140 feet from the front. They mentioned that the variance is necessary to avoid further disturbance to existing vegetation on the site, as well as to utilize an existing entrance to the property. Also, due to the shape of the parcel and the presence of irrigation lines, irrigation ditches, and water ponds, the facility is unable to meet the required 600-foot setback from the property lines. In order to grant a variance, three findings need to be made. One, the variance should not grant wire special privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the base district. Two, the variance relieves undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. And three, the variance should not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Staff finds that the variance does not constitute granting of a special wire privilege as animal boarding with outside runs is an allowed use in the rural preservation district. Through a conditional use application, and the property is located in a rural area on a large 41.79 acre parcel, and most of the surrounding land is in agricultural production with a limited number of residences near the site, which is compatible with the proposed use. There is only one house within 600 feet of the actual facility, and that is the Young Residence, which is approximately 250 feet away from the animal boarding facility to the east. Staff also finds that the variance relieves undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. The subject property has an irregular shape and that is bounded on three sides by the Cuna Canal, creating a triangular-shaped parcel. In addition, the site has existing irrigation lines, water ponds, and irrigation ditches, which affects where on the property the animal boarding facility with outside runs can be located. So on the screen here, kind of this, kind of purplish-blue are kind of water features or irrigation ponds on the property. And then there's a number of, that, in looking at the site plan, it appears to me that the irrigation system is kind of interconnected, where you have some irrigation risers along the Cunamora Road frontage, and then there's also kind of irrigation lines that kind of go between the different ponds. The animal boarding facilities with outside runs is not, it, the animal boarding's outside runs is able to meet the 600-foot setback from the west and east property lines, however is unable to meet the required 600-foot setback from the north and south property lines due to the location of the Cuna Canal ponds and irrigation systems on the site. Staff finds that the variance is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare because the applicant will need to obtain a building permit for the structure to be constructed on the property. Information regarding the variances were transmitted to affected public agencies charged with the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the public, and none of the agencies have indicated that the variance would be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Several neighbors have provided comments regarding this application. The neighbors have raised concerns regarding the close proximity and potential impacts to the Young Residence, which is approximately 250 feet east of the proposed facility, the amount of water that the facility will use, how fecal matter from the animals will be disposed of, and its potential impact to the groundwater if the fecal matter is not properly disposed of, the additional hard surfaces on the property will cause problems with drainage on the property, noise from barking dogs, depreciation of home values, concerns regarding the amount of traffic from the facility, and a nearby railroad crossing that doesn't have a stop arm. The map on the screen shows the approximate location of the kennel with the red star and the locations of the neighboring property owners who have submitted written comments with denoted by blue diamonds. This slide also shows the approximate distances between the kennel and the neighboring residences. There is just one residence that is approximately 250 feet from the kennel, and the rest of the nearby residences on the property are over 1,000 feet away. Staff finds that some of the concerns raised by the neighbors can be addressed. For instance, the applicant is required through a condition of approval to submit a grading application that must be reviewed and approved by the county engineer. Also, as a term of approval, all drainage shall be retained on-site during and after construction, and the applicant is required to restore all disturbed areas. Also, as a term of approval, the disposal of animal waste shall comply with the Iowa Department of Environmental Quality and Central District Health Department's requirements. The A County Highway District in their response did not indicate that the kennel would adversely impact the level of service for the area roadways. In addition, dogs will be housed indoors at night, and there are employees required to be on-site at all times to take care of the animals. None of the agencies have raised any objections to the project. Key agency comments include the following. The city of Cuna replied that they have no objections to the proposal. The associated county engineers state that the applicant will need to submit a grading application and that all drainage shall be retained on-site during and after construction, and the applicant is responsible for restoring all disturbed areas. The Central District Health Department responded that if restroom or plumbing facilities are to be installed, then a sewage system must be installed to meet Iowa State Sewage Regulations. The A County Highway District is requiring the applicant to dedicate driveway to toll 100 feet from the centerline of Cunamora Road abutting the site and to set all permanent structures a minimum of 150 feet from the centerline of Cunamora Road abutting the site. ACHD's comments came after the draft findings of fact were published. Staff is recommending for a new condition of approval to be added to the conditions of approval if the board chooses to approve this project. The new condition of approval is for the applicant to submit a revised site plan depicting that the structure is a minimum of 150 feet from the centerline of Cunamora Road. It should be noted that in the future, the applicant may need to relocate their parking with the dedication of 100 feet of driveway to ACHD. Staff finds that this application applies with the Cuna coverage of plans adopted by A County in the A County Code, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for our, from our staff? Go ahead.
Yes, Brent, thank you. The, the water features, et cetera, are they natural, or how did, the, the big pond there, that, is that, is that a natural, or is it irrigation water? What, what causes that water?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Dilly, I, that's a great question. I do not know. I'm, hopefully the applicant may be able to answer that.
In other words, is it permanent? So I'll, I'll ask them. Another question, you, the revised site plan, can you reiterate what the revised site plan would be required?
Sure. So basically, with the A County Highway District, they, so Cunamora Road is envisioned to be expressway sometime in the future, and so ACHD has stated that based, because Cunamora Road is envisioned to be an expressway in the future, they would want to make sure that nothing is going to be built that would encumberance ACHD from building a future freeway along Cunamora Road. And so, in their agency comments to us, they've requested for basically any structures to be placed at least 150 feet back from the centerline of the current Cunamora Road.
So based on the site plan, the picture that we have, if you go down to the next site plan, the picture, that one. So it show, what, what you're saying then is that parking lot and though that vegetation at some point in time would have to be removed for the, and that's what we're, we would be approving, that they're agreeing to in the future.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Dilly, that is correct. So basically, the, the structure itself right here, based on some of the dimensions on the site plan, I think one corner of this building is about 148 feet from the property line here, and then the other portion of the building is about 150 feet. So essentially, if, if Cunamora Road was to be widened, it could take out quite a bit of the landscaping in the parking here.
And, and that's, well, I see applicant, but the presentation is, when you said revised site plan, that would be in the revised site plan?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the board?
Chair.
Go ahead.
Would that revised site plan make it 150 feet further away from the nearest house?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, what would, with the revised site plan, the, the building itself would need to be moved further back. So it would be further back from the existing house that's across the street on Cunamora Road. I, it doesn't necessarily that with, depending on how, if you did approve this and how you worded the condition, it doesn't necessarily require the whole facility to be moved a full 150 feet back, because it could be less, you know, because right now, the, the building itself is about, just a little bit, about 150 feet currently right now. So it would necessarily need to be moved a full 150 feet back.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, any other comments or questions from the, from the board? Hearing none. Thank you.
I have one. Oh, it's your turn.
Okay. No, we're, we're going to hear from the applicant now. Is the applicant here?
Oh, okay.
Okay, go ahead. You've got 15 minutes to present your case.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I don't know if this is close enough to me. Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Whitney Bonnet, and I am the applicant for the commercial boarding facility otherwise known as Wolfson Wags Resort and Spa, proposed on Cunamora Road. To tell you the story of how the concept of Wolfson Wags came to be and how I came to standing in front of this audience today, I wanted to take you back two decades so that you'll understand how the property has historically been utilized and to convince you my knowledge, experience, and ultimately my deep passion for our four-legged friends. My love for animals began at a very young age. As a three-year-old little girl, I made animals my best friend. My parents even caught me walking the cat once or twice, much to my own enjoyment, but if you've ever seen a cat on a leash, our cat probably didn't enjoy it very much. As I grew older, my love for animals grew with me, and I aspired to work with animals in some capacity. At just 13 years old, I took my very first summer job, working for my aunt, who is a professional dog trainer. This is where my passion for animal care really blossomed. I woke up at 5:00 a.m. daily to ensure the dogs were aired, fed, and had a clean kennel to rest in following their training. I assisted reputable field trial dog trainers on the property until I was finally old enough to drive myself to and from work. With the freedom my driver's license brought me, I took a job at North Star Kennels as a kennel attendant, receptionist, and much more. Animal care continued to be a deep calling for me, and I knew I wanted to work for a veterinary facility. So just at 16 years old, I was incredibly fortunate that with the experience I gained through my early teen years, it qualified me to be entrusted with people's beloved pets at Intermountain Pet Hospital as a kennel and hospital attendant. I loved what I was doing so much that I held two part-time jobs working with animals throughout high school, and yes, I did keep my grades up and I even graduated early. I was so determined to land my dream job at Intermountain Pet Hospital that I dropped off my resume in person, followed up with them over the phone multiple times. And during my time there, I experienced both the positive and negative aspects of working with animals, and I developed a deep compassion for animals in distress and caring for them. Animal care is not always sunshine and rainbows. There are happy days, but there are also very sad days. These experiences, good and bad, motivated me even further to strive for excellence in improving the care experience for animals and their owners. As my parents saw my love for working with animals grow, they sought out a property with the intention of one day doing just this, building a commercial boarding facility and investing in my passion for animals. They found that property, which is now South Retriever Run Lane, and I did not know this at the time, but it was always part of my remarkable parents' plan to make my dream come to fruition, and I will forever be grateful for their love, time, and energy that they have invested into me. I would not be here before you today without their support, and I would not be the woman that I am today without their love and guidance. This special place holds a dear spot in my heart as it has been a setting for so many important moments in my life. I took my senior pictures there in a beautiful field behind the pond, and in 2018, I married my best friend Xavier, who was a staff sergeant in the Air Force, in that same backyard. Our beautiful wedding pictures taken on that property hang in my house currently. On the weekends, I watch my dogs, hawk and bear, enjoy the same backyard where I have played with all, a ton of other animals and cared for over the years. My roots are here, my family is here, my husband is here, my husband's family is here. Ultimately, is my goal to spend the rest of my life here and raise my future children there as well. Now, how did I get, come to standing in front of you all this evening? Well, the last several years, figuring out how to make this dream happen while also designing and tweaking this project to be a top-tier pet boarding facility that sets the gold standard for prioritizing animal well-being and responsibly serves my surrounding community. Looking at the design for Wolfson Wags, you will notice the resemblance to a classic barn, blending into the surrounding architecture and landscape. Everything about this design was absolutely intentional. We had not one, but two neighborhood meetings to gauge the support and give our neighbors a voice. The first meeting was well- The first meeting was well-attended. Our, our neighbors had a platform to share their positive feedback as well as their concerns, and we were able to address their questions directly. After a period of time, we were required to host a secondary meeting, but the attendance was not strong, and we had nobody show up. As I begin to wind down my speech for tonight, I wanted to address several of the inaccuracies in the letters that we did receive from the Youngs and the Ag News in this application process. I certainly do understand their concerns regarding the water needs for this facility and how that might impact the aquifer. It is for that exact reason that we have proposed a well and will not be tapping, tapping into the aquifer. Another concern was that, on the topic of increased organic matter, otherwise known as fecal matter, but I will be referring to it as organic matter. I will, I want to reassure you that this is a standard practice at any animal boarding facility to immediately pick up and properly dispose of the organic matter, with, with expectations that our facility regularly and quickly disposes of the organic matter, the conditions regarding our facility regular, oh, sorry, that was my bad. The potential health risk will be addressed as it will be disposed of. I have printed out even a few sheets from the Association of Shelter Veterinarians that states it's a proper sanitation practice, if anybody would like a copy of that. Letter writers expressed a potential drainage issue as well, with a paid 40 space parking lot as a concern. However, we are proposing a dustless gravel parking lot, which will not only more naturally blend into the surrounding landscape, but it facilitates better drainage as well. Both letters also convey concerns about noise, and back to the intentionality of the design with this that we committed to earlier. We pro, we proactively elected to construct this project out of a building material with two times the sound deadening properties as a two-by-six framing, compared to a two-by-six framing. The product will minimize internal noise in consideration of our community, but equally important to the animals and our care, it will minimize outside noises, which are stress-reducing to pets. With the location of this project and property, we knew from conception that we would need to navigate noises such as train horns from numerous times in the night and the day, fireworks on holidays, and eventually, the street noise from the Kuna-Mora Expressway, so that our animal guests have the quietest experience possible. Both parties also concern, were also expressed concern regarding the road traffic capacity to address this. I would like to refer to the ACHD's assurance that no road improvements are required at this time. I do want to note that we do plan on acting on the ACHD's comments regarding the 150-foot setback to landscaping, and we're going to push everything back 150 feet as long as we have the room for it. We, we want to make sure there's enough room in between the facility and the Kuna-Mora Expressway, as stated. I do also have some maps for review, if anybody wants to see the property. I know we saw it up there, though I wasn't sure if it was going to be presented. And the Ag News also expressed some concerns regarding nesting raptors. I want to remind everybody how long my family has lived on this property, has now been over a decade, during which time we have hunted on the property, and we've also trained dogs on the property. Nesting raptors have never been observed in the property. My father, Benetevria, who is also here, lives on the property full-time, and he has not seen any nesting birds. With firsthand observation, I can reassure you that there are no issues regarding wildlife habitat disturbance. As I wrap up my time with you tonight, I want everyone to understand why a facility of this nature is needed in the Treasure Valley. As a licensed realtor, I can see our population is growing exponentially, despite how some of us may feel about that. The number of boarding facilities available to serve the animals that come along with the population increase is not sufficient enough to serve that growth. In fact, with so people traveling in 2020 due to COVID, numerous facilities actually closed down. It is our belief that the, that building one boarding facility on 42 acres is much less disruptive to the area than an entire subdivision would be, and it is more fitting to, for the rural zoning in place. In addition, a facility built to the standard of excellence in scale does not exist currently in the state of Idaho. Wolfson Wags is not only my lifelong dream and passion, it is truly a one-of-a-kind project that will serve the four-legged family members of our community and meet the needs of their owners. And now that I've addressed any opposition, I, I know that I'm going to have a little bit more, I do have some letters of support from the Low Family Farmstead and Linda Harker I would like to submit to the record, and I also would like to thank everybody that showed up for me tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Go ahead.
Uh, yes. Thank, thank you for coming. Uh, but I guess my question, because you've lived there the whole time, so the house down by the canal is where you grew up?
Yes. Is it okay if I hand you guys something, or he hands you something? It kind of points out where our house is and everything. It's the same thing, you have it labeled a little bit better and closer up for you guys.
So, my question then is, if you've lived there the whole time, how, how did you choose the location for the kennel, especially in relation to the road and where your home is, et cetera?
So there was a couple of considerations when determining where to put the boarding facility, and one of them is due to the shape and where all the irrigation lines are on the property. Uh, as you can see, we do have room to scoot further back, which we are, I'm more than willing to do. I also designed these plans, so we can definitely move that back a little bit further so that there is plenty of room in between the facility and Kuna-Mora Expressway, but it, it doesn't fit anywhere else, and it, when I spoke with ACHD, they had told me that I could not add another access way to the property, so we were trying to utilize the access that was already on the property.
Go ahead.
Uh, so, I'll ask the same question about the pond. So this is, is this a natural pond?
The big pond is a natural pond, yes.
So it's, it's, it's just sub, as it were, it's there all the time?
Yes. All of them are, are, oh, the big pond, yes, has water in it all the time. Not a lot, but yes.
I have several other questions.
Go ahead.
I don't know if he wants to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, let's just discuss a little bit how the, the operation of your business is going to work. So you have, you have the kennel, and then you have this large outdoor space, so, um, what is the, just kind of walk us through when somebody brings their dog to you, what, what you have in mind?
So, what our main intention is for those that are traveling out of the state. So conveniently, where the property is located, that's a lot of people's route to go, potentially to the airport, if you're going the back route. So that's what we're, our goal is for, is to reach people that are going out of town and not necessarily people that are dropping off for everyday daycare, such as, you know, when I worked at Intermountain Pet Hospital, that was a very large daycare, and a lot of people dropped off and picked up every day. That's not necessarily our intention. Uh, our intention is to prioritize the daycare space for the dogs that are staying with us. They can get groomed there, they can get trained there, they can just stay there while their parents are vacationing, and they can have their own vacation there.
So, so tell me about, uh, the time the dog spends indoors versus outdoors, what does that kind of schedule look like?
So that can vary per, per dog and what the client wants, and I, I, I like to believe that every dog is a little bit different, every breed is a little bit different in what they like to do. So it would depend on, they're, they're probably going to be outside just for potty breaks at least four, five, six times a day, depending on what we end up with and what our hours end up actually being, which we would, we want to stick with those hours, and I haven't quite figured out exactly how often or the durations, but they will not be left out unattended for an abnormal amount of time. Staff will be onsite immediately nearby, listening for them.
My, my assumption would have been that the, their primary amount of time would be spent outside, because it, like, you want them to wander around and be outside, but, but the majority of their time will be spent inside at the kennel.
I would, I would say, it, it really depends. If the owner would like, or the dog is able to go to daycare, then yes, they would be outside a majority of the day. If the owner wants their dog to be going on a hike around the property, then yes, they will be outside. Of course, they're still going to get their outside time where they're being, you know, alternated and making sure that we're cleaning their kennels, making sure they have everything, full water in their kennel. They'll be outside for those times, but they're not going to be left outside for a very long time, unattended, just for the safety of the dogs. Some dogs will try to jump fences and escape, so it is a safety thing, but owners can opt to have their pets, you know, walked out off-site and all that different stuff.
You've got a, a plan to keep the dogs from, you know, fighting with each other when they're outside?
Yep. So we would be using solid fencing. So solid fencing is proven to reduce noise and fighting, just because they can't, when dogs can't see each other, they're less likely to even bark at each other.
So what do you mean? You're going to have, like, a lot of separate fenced-off areas?
Yes. Yes, so I, I kind of wish that I had the plans. The plans show there's a lot of separate airing yards, so when the dogs are out there, they're completely by themselves, and they are able to use the bathroom wherever they want on there, and after each dog comes in, the kennel tech will have to go out there and sanitize and dispose of, you know, whatever matter is out there, and they have to get their kennel clean while they're out there. So they will be out there for however long it takes to get their kennel cleaned, to get everything nice and ready and warm for them in there, but it's not going to, it's not left outside for them to want to come back in at that point scratching at the dogs. They're only out there to do their business, maybe hang out for a little bit and come back in, other than activities where an actual kennel attendant will be taking them places.
Will you have another fence around the whole perimeter?
There is a, a whole, the whole property is fenced in.
Okay. Um, now, obviously, well, at least for me, I think the biggest concern is probably the noise, and you talked about that a little bit, but, uh, um, you're going to have extra insulated walls in the kennel, and then you, you mentioned the, the fences, are they going to have some noise-canceling property?
It's at, it might, probably won't be necessary because of the material that we're using. Your traditional two-by-six house will allow quite a bit of noise. I can hear a lot of kids playing in the backyard whenever I'm at my house, but with the material that we're using, it is two times as sound deadening as a traditional house, meaning you can't, you can't hear on the inside. There's concrete in the middle of the walls, and it, it's not a very loud transmission. And there's going to be two concrete walls that separate from the kennel space and the office space. So it's not only just one concrete wall, it is two.
Have you done any kind of sound testing to see what kind of volume that, you know, the neighbors with the house closest, uh, might be hearing?
That's not something that we have done, however, I do have some studies, not necessarily with, with me, that I can provide.
And, what are your hours of operation planning to be?
I know it was in, it, I haven't refreshed up on that. I don't know if I can ask Brent to state those again. I think, I believe it was 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM during the week, and then seven, or 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on the weekends? Okay. Thank you.
7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday?
Yes.
And then nine to five on the weekends?
Yep.
Seven days a week?
Yep.
All right, go ahead.
Go ahead. You have any more questions? Go ahead.
Yes, I have some more questions. So you said you're going to be using a well for water?
Yes.
Uh, and how deep do you envision that you have to go to get water there?
When I've spoken to a lot of the well drillers, they are saying that we have to have an engineered well system. It has to be a certain size and everything, and they told us that that was what we were going to have to do, so I was just going off of the experts' recommendations.
Whatever they recommend. So, the, then my question in terms of the fecal matter, you've consulted, because that was one of the requirements with Central District Health, and whatever they, the design will be based on what they require for taking care of it?
Right.
And it, will that be designed based on current, uh, volume of usage or planned for future growth, or do you plan for future growth?
We designed this as large as we would like it to be.
So, so it'll ultimately have a, an endpoint in terms of volume, size?
Yes. And they, they base their sizing off of it being at full capacity as well.
Uh, and you indicated that, um, the, well, the staff did, that, it's, how far are you, are you from? It's in the impact zone of Kuna. How far from the city are you currently, would you would be currently?
I don't know. Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Dilly, I think they're probably around, like, maybe, probably about 1,500 feet away. I mean, um, because there's a, kind of on the other side of the canal, there's some land that's, um, that's in the seashore of Kuna, south of the canal there, that's fairly close, and that parcel's probably about 1,000 feet away or 1,500 feet away from the canal.
So I guess my, my question is, then, in terms of the city, the city is going to be growing around you, so do you don't envision those 41 acres to be anything except that the house and the facility, because of the way it's laid out, the way you described, that's?
Um, I would, I would like it to stay that way as long as possible, yes. Uh, we want to keep the land as preserved as it is, and I, I personally like going out to Kuna because it's a little bit slower, it's a little bit more spread out, out there, and I, I don't have any plans to build anything else on the property, just, just this.
Okay. Uh, and, Commissioner Davidson answered my, asked my noise questions. Uh, so the, uh, one more question. The closeness to the road, when you said you were going to potentially change the design and the location of the road, if it's going to have to be moved anyway, based on ACHD's, so is that in the current plan? Are you going to do that now or plan it in the future?
I can revise that and have it to you tomorrow if you wanted to. Um, I didn't know that, that that was a requirement. ACHD let me know that, whenever Brent sent me the stuff, which was about a week ago. So I, I didn't know that until about a week ago, and we applied for this a couple months ago, but we do, we can move it.
You're, you're prepared to?
Yes.
Deal with that if necessary?
Yep.
When and if necessary?
Yes, especially, I, I don't want them tearing up new beautiful landscaping.
That, that's why I asked the question, because if, if you've done a lot of work in terms of?
Yes.
And there, there would be mature trees potentially, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I don't think I have any more questions.
Okay. Are there any other questions to the applicant? Mr. Chair? Go ahead.
Brent, could you summarize the variance request?
Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, the variance request is because one of the specific use standards for animal boarding with outside runs is that the animal boarding outside runs has to be at least 600 feet away from a property line, and so because of kind of the way this property is shaped, this property is shaped kind of like a, because the, basically the property is shaped on three sides by the canal, it's hard to meet the, the front property line, which is along Kuna-Mora Road, and then kind of the rear property line, which is kind of, would be the south property line along the canal, based upon how the, the canal kind of curves along the property. Um, and so that's, you know, the request for the variance is for the, the animal boarding with outside runs to be within 600 feet of a property line.
Thank you. So, in order to qualify for the variance, you have to meet three criteria, so do you want to kind of address the variance specifically and, and why you need that?
I need it because we cannot meet it on all of the sides of the facility. We can meet it on the west and the east portions of the property, but we can't meet it on the north and the south. Like I said, we're more than willing to scoot the facility back to accommodate for the ACHD's potential plans of a Kuna-Mora Expressway and the requirement of the 150 feet, but we just can't, we can't reach it due to how, as Brent said, the property gets thinner on that side of the property. We just can't meet the 600 with how the property currently is.
Yeah, variance also can't negatively affect the public health and safety, so do you want to address that portion as well?
Um, I don't believe that it would cause any harm to the public or safety, uh, as we are taking a lot of, like, like I said in my little speech, everything wasn't very intentional about this. We chose to intentionally construct, well, potentially construct this facility out of a sound deadening material for not only our community, but also for the livelihood and the wellness of the animals and not, maybe not being accustomed to hearing a train going off or hearing fireworks from a nearby venue or whatever noises nearby. We're, we're trying, we've tried to listen to all of the neighboring concerns, and we have made adjustments in order to try to make everybody happy, but we understand we cannot make everybody happy as much as we would like to, but I don't believe that there are any public safety issues that are deemed because of this facility.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions to the applicant? Okay, thank you. You'll be, you'll be, uh, allowed to do, there, there is some opposition, of course, and you'll be allowed to make some rebuttal at the end of the testimony.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is, is the Royce Napolitino, is he waiting to testify on this application?
Yes, he's still online.
Okay, if you get him online, he could testify first. Okay, Royce, are you there?
Yes, uh, yes, Chairman, I am here. Royce Napolitino from Edmonds, Washington. I'm speaking in opposition today to this, to the request for variance for this commercial kennel. Um, the reasoning is that, that, as the applicant expressed, that they cannot meet the conditions of the master use, um, and so they've, they've come to you to ask you for a variance, um, with no real proof that they cannot, um, guarantee that public health or safety will they cannot guarantee that public health or safety will not be affected. And then we've, I also submitted a letter on behalf of the Youngs, which demonstrated a number of items, a number of points. And it does, it is a massive structure. It is located very closely to an existing home. 25,000 square foot building located within 150 feet of the road is an imposition in the, and imposes itself into the community. ACHD has already come back demanding that a dedication of the right of way give them a 100 feet from the center line, which would basically engulf the Youngs' property altogether as theirs is also a similar triangle. You, I would ask you, I would discourage you to, from finding this variance acceptable because you are, you would be unable to prove that it is not detrimental in, in a number of ways. The, the reasoning behind a setback of this size of 600 feet from a commercial kennel is partly in, because of the impact of public health to the community with the, with the abatement of noise being an exponential factor, the closer you are to the road, the more sound you create, period. Whether or not you've dedicated yourself to controlling that, the structure itself is with, is, is a quarter of the distance from what is required. So I would, I would ask you, and I, I understand that the proposed has satisfied a number of conditions within their permit. I recognize that. They are doing their, their best to try to make this, this kennel work, and I can respect that. However, the undue and adverse impact to the Youngs cannot be denied. The roadway, the, the noise, we, there are portions of this that we can't even compute when it comes to the depreciation of a home value, the conditions of the neighborhood, how the, how that property is currently used, the development that has occurred on the proposed property, including irrigation and water features that has essentially made any other location of the building an impossibility due to their own, their own building there. So I, again, I would ask that, I would discourage you from finding this variance. And we have, we have demonstrated through the exhibit that was provided to you just how we have addressed some of those items and the questions that we have asked. So I-
Could you wrap, could you wrap it up?
Yes, I can. Thank you for that. While the city of Cuna recognizes that this is within its growth area, it does not recognize that the, the size is a cor, is, is anything that is permissible outside of the county's current code. And the, this variance would most surely be outside of that code. Please do not find in, in favor of this variance.
Okay, thank, thank you. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Napolitino. So you brought up the issue of noise regarding health and safety. You, you heard my questioning to the applicant about how they're planning to mitigate noise. Did you have any, any more specific, concrete concerns that maybe you could just kind of flesh out your argument a little bit more?
Understood. Thank you for that. While I did not research variances currently permitted with, with this, with a short setback, like, that would, that would be my first place to look, would be whether there are other county buildings that have been offered a variance. And while we do not have a noise study, the, there, there are some found facts about decibel count and the distance traveled that reduces that number exponentially. So while I don't have the concrete evidence, I'm sure that there are variances, applications for variance of this sort that could perhaps demonstrate that for us.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Question for staff. How, does the Ada County Noise Ordinance come into play in, in these types of situations?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, I would believe it would come into play in this situation.
Do you, I don't know if you know by memory, but can you summarize what the Noise Ordinance says?
I don't know if Richard Leon may remember that more than I do.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I'll, I'll pull it up here if you'd like.
That'd be great, yeah.
One of the key things about it is it's a limitation of noise after certain hours. And so the applicant's proposed hours of operation wouldn't fit into those hours. It's usually after 10:00 PM, I believe.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's, the Noise Ordinance is in, make sure I actually have the right code here.
Also, could we pull up an aerial view on the screen?
Sure.
Yeah, Noise Ordinance is in Title 5, Chapter 13 of county code, and I'll pull it up here. I believe as Leon has mentioned, primarily focuses on kind of nighttime, nighttime nuisances. So basically, it says between the hours of 10 o'clock PM and a 7 o'clock AM should be unlawful for any person or business to make cause of loud, allow, loud or unusual noise by means of voice, musical instrument, horn, let's see if I can skip it later, or domesticated animals. So it does specify domesticated animals and it specifies the 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM timeframe.
So, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So theoretically, if, if this was granted and the animals were in the kennel after 10:00 PM, you know, you're hoping they're sleeping, but if the animals started barking within the kennel after 10:00 PM and the neighbors were, could hear it to the point where it was an annoyance, that would violate the Noise Ordinance.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, I'd be correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Napolitino.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, our next, is there a, Don Boyer?
Yes.
Hey, identify yourself and you, and you'll, you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to speak on this matter. I actually thought about getting a, a phone ring that would be dogs barking so I could turn it on and really low so we could talk and see what it would sound if it was going to happen. But at any rate, that was Schumer. Please forgive me for that.
Okay.
At any rate, I've, I've lived there for a long time and we really, it looks like this thing does not fit on this piece of property. Because in fact is, if it doesn't fit, then what can we possibly do to make it fit? You know, when it came to, you know, using agriculture, for instance, you know, dogs are not considered agriculture, rural, that was, those are the ways that we actually decided that property could be used. And so as we try to change those things, we could actually put ourselves in a position where on this piece of ground, there could be a strip mall right there somewhere, someday. Because in fact is, we leave what we consider to be rural agriculture farm ground and then turn it into something else. Now, I own the place across from it. It's no big deal. I'm a good neighbor. I've let people use the road for years, but the Cunamora Road, when it goes along the canal, is actually a single track road. And we never talk about that just because of the fact that school buses use it, two trucks get together and they can't get by without finding a spot to turn over. But that's okay because that's just part of being a neighbor. And, and that's what we're trying to be as a neighbor. However, I feel sorry for the Youngs because the Youngs have no other choice. Because if this goes in, what happens to the Youngs? Not to mention, in fact, their property. And he's a Vietnam vet and he's got cancer. I just don't understand why we, so the variance in itself shows that it doesn't fit. And since it doesn't fit, and even with the setback that we would have if they put the corridor in, it's not going to fit better. You know what I'm saying? So I'm thinking that, how can we do this? We got 200 dogs. We got barking, dogs will bark, and that's okay because we live in the country. However, when you get this many things like this in one spot that shouldn't be, what is that going to do to whatever happens later on? You know, they've got a situation where Meta is now, everybody's worried about the home that's going to happen, you know? I mean, it just goes on and on and on. This place right here actually is a good place. Ben's a good neighbor, you know? They've had some, that pond go, flown over a couple of times and got into the Youngs' property. But the point is, if we do this, what do they have? Do they, do they have any choice? They really don't have a choice. Unless Ben wants to buy them out, and then it won't matter. But the point is, I don't know that that would be an option. But at any rate, I'd ask you guys not to, you know, to allow the variance because the variance is what makes the difference on whether or not it belongs there or not. Not to say that it would be good somewhere else, but not on that piece of property.
If you could wrap it up, sir.
Okay.
Is there any questions before you leave?
Could I ask one question first?
No, you, you've given your testimony. Are there any questions of the board?
Pardon?
Go ahead, Chair. I'll ask you a question. So obviously, we're dealing with, so we're, this use is allowed in this zoning designation. The only issue really is the size of the piece of land. If this was a big rectangular piece, you know, you wouldn't be able to object to it. But the fact that it's, you know, smaller than, or it's oddly shaped and so it's, you know, again, so again, if this was a rectangle, you guys couldn't oppose it, but because it's an awkward size, then, then the variance comes into play. So it, it is kind of within the rule that a kennel could be there. It's just a question of how close to the road it can be. So was your concern that this is not within the, the character of the neighborhood? Because it would be allowed if the land was a different shape.
So, so, maybe I don't understand. Is this, is this rural agricultural land that we have, or has that already been changed? And now we're just trying to find something that'll fit on it? Has that property had a change in, in its status in regards to what can happen on it? Because my place is just like that place when we got that, because I live, I've lived there for a long time.
Well, it's all about the definitions. And just because something's called rural or agricultural, there could be a whole bunch of things that are included under that. But let me, I'll direct it to staff. They could say what, what the zoning is, because I don't think, they haven't asked to change the zoning. It should be still the same zoning, but there are different things allowed in different zones. Maybe staff could comment on that.
So, Mr. Chairman, the property is owned rural preservation. And so with rural preservation, there's a lot of different uses that are allowed in the rural preservation district. So some uses are principally permitted, so agriculture, a single family home is principally permitted in the rural preservation district. And then there's uses that are accessories. So if somebody builds like a shop or a barn, that's accessory to the farm or the residence of the property. And then we also have uses that are conditional in the rural preservation district. And so conditional uses in the rural preservation district can range from like agricultural service establishments to, you know, this commercial kennel. So the commercial kennel isn't allowed use in the rural preservation district, but because it's a conditional use, it requires a conditional use application to determine the fit of the use on, on that particular site.
So that's a lot of, I guess, technical talk that says in a rural lot, you can still have a kennel if, if it works out.
Under the present situation, you might not be able to unless you get a conditional use permit.
Or, or the variance.
That's changing the nomenclature. That's all I was thinking. Because I had left the message, so he would call me back. I needed to ask some questions and I'm sorry to waste your time, but I just wanted to speak about the Youngs. So what's going to happen to the Youngs? I mean, this is going to be a wonderful thing, and if it doesn't fit, and if you guys do that, what are the Youngs going to do? I mean, that's-
Are they here to testify as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll hear from them too.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Right here on this piece of paper that I got, I noticed that Ben's house was out of the red line. What does that mean? Does that mean that that-
So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Boyer, so Ben's house, I think was created through a farm development right process. So basically, they're able to basically create like a one to two and a half acre lot. And so that farm development right parcel is where Ben's house sits.
Okay, so it's a different connotation on that same acreage?
It's a separate parcel from the rest of the acreage.
Oh, so it's a, would it be considered an illegal, an illegal?
I, I did some research on this and it was a farm development right.
Thank you.
All right, Sheri Agnew?
Hi, my name's Sheri Agnew. I live probably within a quarter mile of this area, maybe a little bit less than that. I've been a Realtor for 36 years, practicing Realtor. And that property with the pond, that never, I've been there longer than Mr. Etcheverria has, but that pond has leached water quite often and it goes over to the Youngs and even across Cunamora Road and floods them almost every summer. And there's been nothing done about that. But what I'm trying to say is I believe that's a high water table. And my concern there is going to be the leaching of the disinfectants and all the chemicals they'll be using with this facility that's going to leach into the groundwater. And my other concern is all of the waste that is also worse with a higher water table area. Also, yes, there are birds of prey, raptors, in two nesting sites close to this facility. I can take pictures. I've walked that property quite often. Also, this variance, as well as you've heard from everybody here, does not meet the setbacks. And then that, the, Mr. Boyer was correct in saying Cunamora Road is strangely narrow. It was never intended to be a public road. Mr. Boyer put that road in years ago. It wasn't intended to be a public road. It is now. However, it's barely wide enough for two cars to pass. And also, the railroad tracks is very, very dangerous right there. About nine years ago, a Basque friend of mine was killed there in his pickup truck. He was working for Union Pacific on that very track, and that has had a number of fatalities. And yes, that's a safety problem for the commission here if you approve that variance. That's a definite safety problem. So, and I would say the noise is unmitigated there because they are going to have speakers, a lot of speakers with, and I read the report, and there'll be speakers every time their dogs have a new event or music playing, or I don't even know how the Youngs are going to stand it, honestly. Yeah, noise is a huge problem. That's really all I have to say.
Okay. Are there any questions? Go ahead.
So if you could put the picture of the location, where, where is the railroad track that you mentioned compared to where that is?
It's very close. If I had a pointer, I could point it out to you, but yeah.
This one right here, you can use it to-
Okay.
That little button up there.
Okay. Have we got a site plan here?
He's, he's calling it up.
You'll want to use that one so they can see.
Okay.
It, it'll be up there shortly.
It's, it's, it's a relatively short distance away. The people coming from Boise and Meridian, a lot of them will come out Cloverdale and they will go down Eagle Road to go across Cunamora, right there at that track location. And the same happens with anybody coming from Cuna down South Locust Grove where they have to come back down Cunamora. So, yeah, it's kind of meets in the middle where the, I don't know where I'm supposed to be pointing.
Well, he's, he's having difficulty calling it up.
But it meets about in the middle. So yes, many, much of the traffic is going to go across that railroad trap crossing right there at Cunamora.
And when, when, just in your mind, so you can show me on the map, where, where are you located, when he gets it up there? In relation to the property, where are you located?
Well, he doesn't have anything up there, but I can show you. Do you want me to come up there?
Sorry, we're having some technical difficulties.
I'm right, I'm right, this is where the site is.
Correct.
And I'm right up here.
Okay.
I'm right here. I'm right here.
There we go.
Okay. Now, 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 now he has it up there, so he can show me. So, everybody can see, I guess, is why. So, where's the railroad track? Where are you? And then where's the railroad track?
Okay. Hang on. I don't think it's going to work on the screen.
That big thing there...
Yeah, the railroad tracks are right there.
Is the railroad track.
Ben Etcheverria's house. And then just on, you know, here.
I don't think it'll work, unfortunately.
Now, as I, as I understand it, that railroad track is the main line railroad track. So, major trains go through there, correct?
Yes, every night.
How often do they go through there?
Two or three, couple times a night, at least.
Go to the mic, please, if you talk.
Yes. So, it needs to be recorded, so.
A couple times at least a night, the railroad track goes.
A lot more than that.
I think it might be more than that, yeah.
You've got about 10, 10 to 20 trains a day.
10 to 20 trains?
You get a lot of...
There's a lot of traffic there.
Yeah.
So, what noise level does a train cause as it goes through there?
Um, it's loud. And of course, the noise precipitates from, I think, 300 feet before they hit a crossing. So, they beep three times.
Yeah, that was where it's going next. And does it have bars on it? So, they...
There are no safety arms on it.
So, they do their whistle, though, as they go through, correct?
They do do their whistle, but it, there is no safety arm. Now, over on Locust Grove, there is a safety arm. But that's not Cunamora.
Right. So, there's at least 10 trains a day going through there, causing...
There's a lot of trains that go there.
Causing noise, both from the whistle of the train, as well as just the traffic of the train.
There are, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. I had a question for you. You mentioned a concern about potential chemicals leaching into the water there. So, I'm just trying to think of how that might happen. So, when they come up for a rebuttal, I guess I can ask them. But I would imagine they're mostly using the chemicals inside the chemical, inside the kennel to clean up messes. And then, if the dog is going to the bathroom outside, I'm imagining they're just scooping it up. I don't know if they would spray that area with chemicals or not. I don't know why they would. But if the chemicals are mostly being used inside the kennel, I can't see a big potential for that to get into the groundwater. What were you kind of thinking is...
Well, I was thinking they're going to have the bathing facilities, and the shampooing, and all of that going into a separate septic system. And I believe they won't be granted a regular system there. I think they'll probably have to do an above-ground. Because it's, looks to me like a high-water table down there.
But you're worried the septic would fail and leak?
No, I'm just worried that with a high-water table, anytime you get excess overload of sewage or chemicals, it's going to hit the water table with the high-water table, because it leaches down. I mean, you can even, you don't even have to irrigate a high-water table. It just leaches up and grows your crop, you know?
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
I guess, this is not necessarily, although you can stay there if you need to answer, but it's a staff question. So, one of the conditions for approval is Central District Health has to approve the septic system, et cetera, based on the facility and addressing the issues, potential issues, correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Delia, that is correct.
So, that, through that approval process, Central District Health does review the location, the ground, the volume of what's going to be there, et cetera, when they, when they do their approval process.
Yes. So, Central District Health, so before a building permit is issued, they'll have to apply for a septic permit with Central District Health. And as part of that approval, a lot of times, Central District Health will require test holes to be dug. So, test holes would indicate kind of what the soil type is, and kind of maybe, and would see if there's any groundwater that would seep into the test hole. So, that would be tests that the Central District Health Department would do before they issue out the septic permit.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Nyla Young.
Good evening. I am Mrs. Richard Young. My name is Nyla. My husband's unable to be here because of his illness. He's at home on hospice care. We own and reside at 4550 East Cunamora Road. We're the little house that keeps trying, everybody keeps trying to block us out of there. We're just a little place, but we've been there for 38 years. We raised our family there. We've enjoyed every minute of that peaceful little piece of property. We are the only home on East Cunamora that borders the 41.79 acres belonging to the owners of the property listed as South Retriever Run Lane. The proposed project placement would be directly across the roadway from our home. This proposed development would be an imposing structure and a dramatic change to the neighborhood and community, and would have a substantial impact on us and our property. Let me point out a few of the undue adverse impacts. Water, the water necessary to support an operation of this size will consume vast amounts of existing aquifer. How does a development intend to meet the supply without affecting the existing water supply? They have to have a well. It's the only way to get water, except for the irrigation pond, which they say has been there all along. The irrigation pond that's been there all along is about a quarter of the size of the pond that is there. They dug that pond out when they moved in, so they could train the dogs, which was really great. I thought that was really awesome, and we enjoyed watching them. But it's, it's an added to on the property. This is not something that's been there all along. The proposed health and sanitation measures account for increased fecal matter. This could pose a health risk. And if they meet this, what the, whatever they're called, I can't remember. Anyway, they, that would be just fine. But if any of you have cleaned up after your own dogs, you know how it can smell, and you know how their urine leaches into the ground. And if you put your eyes and your thoughts to it, if there's a bunch of dogs, it's going to be a bunch worse. The roadway in the existing property, existing frontage can best be described as open pasture with livestock fencing in a rural agricultural setting. That's another point. Yes, there is a fence around the entire property. It's a cattle fence. It's a, it's not a fence fence. It's not a solid fence. It's a wire fence that goes around their property, which is not going to hold a lot of dogs in. If they want to get out, they're going to dig, and they'll be out. Anyway, yeah, this is just a, it's a big detriment to us, a big detriment to us. We're just little people there, just little people. But we've been there a long time, and we've put a lot of effort into our home. We raised five out of nine children there. They love this place. Royce Napolitino is my son. My other son is here with me.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Are there any questions? Go ahead.
So, you said you live right across this street, right across the street. I'm sorry, I'll get closer to the microphone. Right across the street, how close is your house to the, to the road, Cunamora Road?
How close? About 10 feet. It's right on the edge of the road. That's another thing. They keep talking about this freeway access. We've been hearing about that for 20 years. Nothing's ever been done about it. It's a little tiny county road. You can't get two trucks, even on the wide part that goes past there. You can't get two trucks there.
So, if the, if the ACHD, their comment is that eventually they plan on expanding that road?
Yeah. I've been hearing that for a long time.
So, what would that do to your house if...
I don't know. They'd have to buy our property out, because we're right there. The borrow pit, the road, the little bit of borrow pit, and our fence line.
So, back to my question. Can I follow?
Go ahead.
So, you are actually not very far away from the railroad track?
No, not far at all.
So, how much noise do you get from the railroad track?
Not from the track, from the engines.
Well, from the traffic on the track.
Of course. It's a railroad. It's a railroad. Everybody's heard the trains. It's noisy. It's, they're noisy. And there's at least 10, and most of the time, way more than that.
Because it is a mainline railroad, too.
We've lived there long enough. We don't pay any attention to it. I'm not really concerned a great deal about the noise, except for, we have coyotes, and foxes, and skunks, and raccoons, and feral cats, and they use that property all the time. They come and go across that property, and it's going to set those dogs off, and you can bet it will. And they're going to, if they smell them, they're going to be all over it. Yes, that's a noise problem. The trains, we've been there so long, we don't even pay any attention to them. But we have lost three people since we've been there at that crossing.
Another question?
Go ahead.
So, how big is your, is your property the triangle there behind your house and the railroad track?
Yes. It's 4.75 acres, I believe, is what they say it is.
So, the pond is right across the street, and it's a natural pond. So, it's the sub, it's the, the natural water table is...
We've been told that it's a, a natural drain that runs from there, right through the middle of our property, down our driveway, on the east side of the, of the house and the structures. It goes all the way, it'll run all the way through there, through our backyard, and through our corral, and into a pond, that, a waste pond, wastewater pond. We've been flooded out from weather. We've been flooded out from neglectful watering, irrigation. If you don't pay attention, and that water overflows, it runs right into the borrow pit on their side of the road. Comes, it gets to a certain point, which is just almost outside our front door. It raises there, and it comes through, across the road, through the property.
So, do you...
I have pictures of the flooding on my phone, if you'd like to see that.
So, you, so you have natural water that comes onto your property, not from adjacent property, even possibly?
Comes from the canal. It comes through a irrigate from the canal. It actually, a piece of it, or a piece of our irrigation ditch runs along the very end of Etcheverria's property. And then it comes out through the fence and runs down the side of the road, between the road and his fence line. It crosses through a pipe underneath Cunamora and onto our property.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I'll ask you some questions. I think, out of all the people, I'm concerned about you the most, because I think everybody else is far enough away that I don't think this is going to affect them that much. But you're the one most directly affected. So, I just kind of wanted to go over some of your concerns there. Well, you mentioned that they only have a cow fence going around the property. That might be something I bring up with them when they come up with the rebuttal, because I think it's worth a discussion whether or not the perimeter fence should be a dog fence or not. Regarding the water, so, let me ask, is your, is your property a farm?
It's five acre, well, we pasture cows. We used to have our own cows, and horses, and pigs, and, but we haven't been able to do that because of my husband's sickness. And so, we pasture out our property to a gentleman, that he comes over and he does the irrigating for us, and he keeps his, a few cows, and they have their cows there during the summer. And that's how we take care of our pasture.
I'm just trying to figure out, because I don't know a lot about farming, but I would imagine a regular farm is probably going to use more water than this dog kennel with only 200 dogs. I mean, I guess the water would be to water their grass, and then water the dogs. But when, you know, a working farm, doesn't that use a lot more water?
Not necessarily, not as small as ours is. You know, they get, the surrounding areas, of course, they would use a lot. I don't know how much you know about water, but when we order, we have to order water in. And we have to order at least 10 inches to, 10 inches. I say 10 inches. I wish my husband were here and could explain it better. It takes about that much to irrigate our pasture. Our yard, we do, we use the well to water our yard. We didn't always, but we do now. The property, Etcheverria's property, they water from the pond. And I really have no idea how much water that takes, but it's, it is a lot more than, but it wouldn't just be for the kennel. You know, they, they'll have property there that they, they'll have to water. So, I can't answer that.
And as far as disposing of the waste, I mean, I imagine, you know, any animal farm, or especially cow operation, that's a lot of waste to deal with. Is it, I don't honestly know how they dispose of it. But I, I mean, you see any parallels between the, dealing with the dog waste and dealing with the cow waste?
Cows, cows are natural, sorry.
Fertilizers, or they...
Fertilizer, thank you. Yes. And so, you know, we don't have cleanup of the cows. The cows, you water, it washes it into the ground. It fertilizes the ground. It fertilizes the cat, the pet, the grasses, you know. So, we don't do, worry about that. But you can't fertilize with dog poop and dog urine. Anyone who's had a dog has little yellow spots in their yard where they go to the bathroom. It's inevitable. It's what they do. It's how they, how it happens. So, I don't know what their intentions are as far as watering those things, you know? If they're going to have concrete areas, you know, then they don't have to worry about that. But they are going to have to clean it up. And if they use gravel for the entryway, you know, and are they going to use gravel in the kennels? I have no idea. In fact, I have had no idea about this for a very long time. I feel like we were totally left outside the perimeter. No one spoke to us. No one came to us. No one presented anything until we got this paper.
Is that paper?
This is all we got.
Is that the notification of the neighborhood meeting?
Yeah. Yeah. No one bothered to come and talk to us about it, even knowing that we are the closest in proximity. We will be affected the most.
Were you, did that notice give you an opportunity to go to the neighborhood meeting and express your concerns?
I don't know when the neighborhood meeting, well, let's see. I know they had a neighborhood meeting, and it's been probably a couple of years ago. I don't really know. Because my husband's been going through chemo treatments and what have you, and he's been sick. And I can't, I couldn't just up and leave him at that time, so I didn't go. I did get some information from Mr. Boyer about what kind of went on. Never heard another word about it until we got this letter.
And what does that letter say?
I'm sorry?
What does that letter say?
This is the one that came in the mail from the commissioners about the plans.
Okay. And that notifies you, there's a hearing tonight? Is that...
I'm sorry?
That, that letter notifies you about the hearing tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And I'm really, the both of us, I guess, are really ignorant to that, because we just never had to be involved in anything like that before. Mr. Danielson, I really appreciate, because he was very helpful. That's why Royce came in handy, because he understands more about that. And he's the one who put things together and helped, helped us get the ball rolling. Otherwise, we'd have been standing here going, duh, because we don't know. We don't have any idea. And maybe that ignorance is our own fault, but it wasn't anything we thought we had to worry about.
Did you have any other concerns with, you know, potential outdoor lighting, or the hours of operation?
Well, let me tell you. Our biggest window in our home is in our living room, which faces Cunamora Road and all of the property directly across. It will all affect us, our bedroom, our living room, and probably even our dining room. I mean, our dining room's around the corner more, but it'll all be a part of our residence.
Did you hear what their proposed hours of operation were?
Yes.
And did you have any thoughts on that?
That's fine. That's fine. We're pretty early to bed, early to rise people. We always have been. We get ready for bed about 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night and relax for the evening. We're in bed by 9:00 and up by 5:00. So, you know, we understand that people do things different than we do, and that, that's okay for, that's okay for us. We, we can... We, we can handle those, if we can get used to the trains, we can get used to the other noise, but I don't know, I guess I just felt like we were just left on the perimeter. And even when they sent out these maps, you can't even see that we have a house there. And, you know, I didn't understand that, I think that's... I really do appreciate this young woman and her aspirations, I think it's wonderful. And I think it's absolutely wonderful that her parents can do that for her. It's beautiful, but don't do it by stepping on the toes of the community. That's not neighborly, that's not, it's just not how people should act. So, anyway, I wish her a lot of luck, and I thank you for your time.
All right, any other questions? Thank you. Okay, I don't have anybody else, uh, signed up to testify, or are there others that wish to testify while they're, while we're here on this thought topic? Okay, I don't hear any others, so, um, the applicant, you have
There's a hand back there. I think she testified though.
You already testified.
I just had a couple of points to make.
Well, you already testified, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you already testified. Okay, go ahead.
Is this the time for supporting, or is that after?
Well, anybody else that wants to testify in any way, unless, you've already testified, but if others wish to support, to testify, you can go ahead and speak, speak, just give us your name and, and your, uh, address.
My name is Micah Duffy.
Say it again?
I'm Micah Duffy.
Okay.
Gentlemen, I would, and lady, I would be a good person to direct, um, a lot of questions and concerns to. I am the current owner of North Star Kennels. Ms. Bonnet worked, uh, with me years ago when she was younger, for, with the lady that I purchased the business from. I am in a current, very similar position, looking for a piece of property to build the exact same business. I run one currently in Boise County. We moved it from Ada County, where it was located in, um, Meridian on Black Cat Road between Eustick and McMillan. We were grandfathered in over there, but the, uh, property was sold to be put into a subdivision development. Since then, we are, we are looking, you know, additionally, I even have a building bought and purchased, ready to go. I've just gotta find the right spot. I wanted to bring up some key points. One of the biggest things to address concern, Central District Health already has an approved septic. The test holes have already been dug, they did seven different individual ones around the entire back area, sides, everything of the property, to ensure, before this went any further forward, that it could be done safely and in compliance. There is different treatment methods that are done for dog kennels. This one will be incorporated with the human site as well, is what the proposed septic. It will be an engineered plan that takes everything into consideration, including the, any groundwater, irrigation, if it has to be elevated, anything in consideration like that, to make sure that it is completely safe to operate. One thing, if you look at what the variance is with the current change that came about last week with Ada County, it's actually the same variance with a different property line. So, moving everything back a hundred and fifty feet from the proposed location is so that they don't have to exercise eminent domain. What is currently in the standing, at least what is on record, is 2027, which is two years. So basically, it looks like the completion of Highway sixteen, they may be starting to move forward on an expressway out that way to help, help that, which unfortunately impacts the Youngs. If you take a look at the, the train, I mean, that thing goes through there sometimes twelve to twenty times a day, all hours of the night, and it blows its horn coming right across that intersection, right where their house is and right where the Youngs' house is. The small road is a concern, that was addressed by ACHD, which was also part of the selection for where the site location was put in, so that it could be utilized to give enough space around the building on all sides to be as closely in compliance as it could be, starting out in relation to the property, so.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this, um, application before we give the? Okay, come on up, give us your name. You got three minutes, give us your name and address.
My name is Victor Napolitino, my mother is Natalie Young. The, uh, property that's directly across the street from the proposed plan. One of the things that the neighbors, I think, are missing here is, we're not here about a bunch of things, we're here about the variance. And there's a already opposed setback that's in place of six hundred feet, and they're proposing shortening that to a hundred and forty feet. That is a gross, gross adjustment from six hundred feet. And when you talk about dog kennels, and the excess traffic, and the noise from the animals, and they can't guarantee that we're not gonna be able to hear these dogs twenty-four hours a day. Trains go through there, they go through there in like a two-minute set schedule, and then it's quiet again. Dogs don't bark for two minutes and stop. When you have a whole bunch of them, they bark twenty-four hours a day. Those setbacks are put in place to ensure safety and community for the neighborhood. Like, that's a imposing structure coming closer and closer and closer. My parents' house is two hundred and fifty feet from the property that they're proposing to build. Like, that is, that's, that's less than half of the proposed setback that's supposed to be from the road. So with the, if you grant a variance of a hundred and forty feet, that is, that's a huge, 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 like, step away from the setback that's already in place, that's put in place for a specific reason. And that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
It's all about the variance, and it needs to be, this, this property just doesn't fit there. It just doesn't fit, their proposed site and a twenty-five thousand eight hundred something square foot footprint of a facility, that's grossly massive, and they're just wanna push it right up next to my parents' house, at two hundred and fifty feet. And the setback is supposed to be at six hundred feet. And to grant a variance for that is just, it's just not what I think our county should be allowing to happen to residents and longstanding citizens.
Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Well, I actually do have fifty seconds left still, so I think I wanna address something that's been talked about. My parents' property is not a farm, it's a ranch. We have cows, we use irrigation water to water the pasture, we use well water to operate the home. That's it, a little bit of grass in the front yard. They are going to use irrigation water, or not irrigation water, well water, pumped from the ground for the entire facility. You don't wash dogs with irrigation water. You don't do any of the stuff that they're planning to do with that, you, you use well water, and that's going to suck out of the aquifer, because a well is part of an aquifer, sorry to say. When they try to say that the aquifer isn't gonna be affected, a well is tapped into an aquifer. They're going to use tons and tons of volumes of water for everything that they do.
All right, thank you. All right, last call, anybody else? Oh, go ahead. Give us your name, address.
My name's Ben Etivaria, I'm Whitney's dad. Just a couple of things that, that I wanna address on the, the fencing of the property. So the, the facility itself has a fence around it, and then this whole entire property is fenced. And I did specific fencing for dogs, it's got four-foot tall fences, um, it's like a mesh wire, so the, there's extra security that a dog's not gonna get out. So not only do you have the facility with its fence around it, then you have the perimeter of the whole property that's fenced too. So, the, for that added security, and, um, you know, uh, another thing that was mentioned is about irrigation in the pond, and how it overflows, and, and, and I understand that, it's, it's irrigating, it's farming, it's hard to regulate that water. Sometimes you order this many acre feet, and, you know, and it shows up, and the pond gets full, and a little bit goes over the, you know, the little dam in the corner, and you get a little water, and, you know, on the road and stuff. And I understand that, but it's not, I don't really feel like that has anything to do with the facility, that's just regulating for my irrigation water to water my property, okay? It's not, um, anything related to that. So, um, yeah, that's, um, that's pretty much all that I, well, I do wanna add, the trains and the noise. We've gotten used to the train, we've gotten used to the noise. I know that where the Youngs live, that the initial honk is right in their backyard, and it's a noisy, it's a really noisy train. I've, I've spent a lot of money, and I can tell you guys firsthand on my property, my house I live in, I spent a lot of money, uh, making sure it was sound detonating, and I've gotten to the point I can't hardly even hear the train. So, for me to believe that you're gonna be able to hear these dogs that are housed inside, um, after ten, or whatever the, the number is, I find that hard to believe. If you can detonate a, a train that's honking, I think you can probably detonate dog noise too. So that's pretty much all I have to say.
All right, any questions, Fair?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, I have a question here.
Yeah.
We heard one comment that the fence around the perimeter was a cow fence, so, you know, wouldn't keep dogs out, is, can you address?
No, that, that is a, that is, I did it for dogs. Because the, the whole dog thing is, is just my passion, it's my hobby, like her, we just love dogs. I made, I made it dog friendly, it's not barbed wire, it's not anything like that, but I didn't want dogs getting out. So, does it, does it work as a, a, a cow fence? Absolutely, but it is primarily done for dogs. And I've spent a lot of money and time building a, I, I mean, a really nice fence around that whole property to make sure that dogs don't get out, because the last thing I want is a dog getting hit or something to happen. So it, it, it is a really nice fence.
So in order for, for a dog to escape, they would have to jump two fences, the one in sort of the out, outdoor pen, and then the perimeter fence?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, be like escaping a, a prison or something, I mean, it, it's, there's a lot of security there.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair. I have another question.
Sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, my, my question is, so, the, the dog fence you built is all the way around the whole forty acres? Uh, at the dog fence? And you built that and someone, one of the people said that you've dealt with dogs on that property over the years, correct?
Since two thousand and, I think, fourteen.
Training them, or?
Yeah, just training and, yeah, just, yeah. Training and, and hunting out there and, and, and stuff. So it's, yeah, it, I've never had a dog get out of, I, I just never have.
That, that was my next question, is if you ever got a
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Good, thank you.
Am I done?
Yes.
You're done. Finally, finally. Yeah, you're done. All right, is there, uh, last call, or anybody else that wants to speak? Because we don't, we aren't, all right. All right, Whitney, you're, you, you've got, uh, a few minutes for your rebuttal, if you'd like.
I will keep it short and sweet, I, I think that we've talked about a lot of things, a little bit, uh, repeatedly, but that's okay. I do have a new statistic that I wanted to tell you guys about. So the product that we're using has a sound transmission of fifty to fifty-five, and a traditional house is much, much lesser than that. And what that basically says is loud sounds can be heard, but they are very, very faint. We shouldn't be able to hear the train from in there, they shouldn't be able to hear the dogs from outside, because like I said, a lot of this is so I don't want the dogs to get nervous, they might, my dogs went out there for the first time, and they were terrified of the train. I don't want a dog that's never heard a train like that to be scared. I want them to be scared of, maybe, maybe the farmstead is having fireworks for the Fourth of July, maybe they're doing something. I don't want the dogs to hear that as well. So our whole point is to keep sound from not only going out, but from going in. I, I don't wanna disturb the neighbors, I know it's very peaceful out there, I've spent a lot of my time out there. Like I said, I got married out there, I got my senior pictures out there, I, I love the peace as well. And when dogs are happy, they're not barking in your face, they're asleep in their kennel, they're asleep on their bed, wherever they would like to sleep. And I also wanted to add that a subdivision would use a lot more water, a lot more water, and cows also produce a lot more poop, and we leave it on the ground, and we dispose of this. We dispose a, of dog feces in the trash, and not leaving it on the ground. That's all I have to add.
Okay, any questions, uh, yeah, while we're, ever here? Go ahead.
Thanks for your, uh, your testimony tonight. Just a couple, a couple more questions, and it's kinda standard when we're considering a, a project like this that may affect the neighbors, but we, I, we didn't mention anything before about any outdoor lighting or lights at night. Do you have a lighting plan, or are you cognizant that, you know, we really don't want bright light shining twenty-four seven, that would affect the neighbors?
As a designer, I love dark sky ordinance places, because we do wanna stay in compliance, and, well, not that this is required in this county necessarily, but a lot of the places that I've designed for do require a dark sky ordinance, and I love that, because then you can see the stars at night, right? When you're out in the country, you wanna be able to see the stars. I don't know if I can request for staff to do anything, but on that landscaping plan, it does have called out what we are planning to use for the lighting plan, and most of them, you'll notice, are motion censored. So they will not be on unless there is motion coming by, such as a dog outside, and they will not be outside past, you know, closing hours.
And then somebody had mentioned, uh, possibility about outdoor sound system or music. Are you planning to have speakers or music playing in the outdoor part?
The only place that would have speakers is just to simply announce if a dog is going home, if, to tell the kennel attendants, and that's not necessarily determined. The daycare might have a little bit of noise, but that is faced towards our property, and it, it's, it's a small speaker system, just so the kennel attendant can listen to a little bit of music, and calming music for the dogs.
And are you planning on having events at all in the outdoor areas?
No.
No?
Okay, anything else? All right, no other questions, other than yourself? No questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, do we have any, uh, any, um, documents need to be added to the file?
Mr. Chairman, yes. So Exhibit forty will be my presentation, and Exhibit number forty-one was the irrigation lines, uh, drawing that Ms. Bonnet had passed out to you.
Okay. So that'll be it?
Yes.
Okay, I will close the public hearing on application two oh zero two four zero zero eight five nine CU MSPV, Whitney Bonnet. Thank you. The application being closed, testimony being heard, and rebuttal being given. It is now the, uh, in, in the hands of the, of the commission. Is there any, any, uh, opening comments anybody wishes to make?
Go ahead. You want me to start?
Yes.
Go ahead. Well, I, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, I think we, we heard a lot of good testimony, and I, I think we covered just about any, every conceivable, uh, issue that, that might come up with this one. I think, uh, out of all the arguments I've, I've heard, as I mentioned, I think really the Youngs are mainly the ones that are affected. I think everyone else is, is far enough away that, um, any of the potential impacts really gonna be, be pretty minimal. So, I, I think the, the discussion really is if, if, if the Youngs are, um, so negatively affected that, uh, the variance should be denied. I'm definitely, um, sympathetic to their concerns. I live next to a kennel, and it drives me crazy sometimes. And I don't vote against a lot of projects, but, uh, one of the few projects I voted against was another dog kennel at a, at another place in the county. So I, 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 again, I'm very, very conscious of all the potential negative effects that could, that could be associated with living next to a kennel, and so that's why I tried to ask a lot of questions, because I was trying to, trying to suss out how responsible that the, uh, the applicants are going to be. And, and I think I, I did hear a lot of good testimony that, that they do intend to be good neighbors. You know, we really kinda focused on the, the, the noise, which to me, I think, is the number one concern generally with something like this. And so, we heard testimony about the, um, the sound deadening qualities of, of the, uh, walls that are gonna be installed at the kennel. And I think that will go a long way to mitigate, mitigate some of the effects of the noise, if this is granted. Of course, we, we do have a noise ordinance, so if, after ten PM, if there is excessive noise, then, then that can be dealt with through, through code enforcement, it would be illegal to, to generate that much noise. Again, the noise question is, I, I think that I am satisfied with the testimony I've heard, that the noise is not gonna be a, um, overly negative impact to the surrounding neighbor. Some of the other concerns, I, I liked what I heard about the lighting, that's always something that we bring up, or is a business gonna have bright light shining in the, in the neighbor's property? I, I, I think Um, I, I, I think the testimony I heard satisfies that. There's, there's not going to be music or events played, you know, all day. Um, when, when we deal with similar things like wineries that want to have event centers, they want to have events outside and they want to amplify music. And so that's always a concern. That doesn't seem like that's going to be present in this case. Uh, we asked a lot of questions about the water, um, about the removal of the, uh, the dog poop. And from all the testimony I heard, I, I, I think that I'm satisfied that that's going to be dealt with in, in a responsible way. Uh, so after all of that, I would say that I am, uh, leaning towards, uh, approving the variance.
Okay. Any other comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just to amplify what, uh, Commissioner Davidson said, uh, I think we've, we've delved into all the issues that have been presented. Uh, just another comment on the, on the water, uh, which is one of my issues. The, they are, they are going to be using a well. Uh, the water table is clearly high there. So one additional well into that aquifer, I don't think is going to negatively impact the water table in the, in the aquifer sufficiently to have that as an issue. Uh, and the noise issue, uh, as we discussed, uh, the trains are there and, uh, they will always be there and we have no control over them. Uh, and they're continual and they're ongoing. Uh, I don't think, based on what the applicant has stated, the noise that is going to be created, if it's, if there is any outside of the facility, is going to be sufficiently additive to what's already there in the neighborhood in terms of trains and other things. Uh, Central District Health, I think, uh, I have a clear understanding that they, if they haven't addressed the issues, uh, that are going to be there in terms of the septic and the, uh, water quality issues, they will address them before it's allowed to move forward. Uh, so I think the major issues that have been addressed and I, like Commissioner Davidson, I sympathize with the neighbors in terms of some of their concerns, but I think those are concerns in the application, uh, both by staff as well as by the applicant have been addressed and, uh, that, uh, the main reason for the variance is undue hardship in terms of the, the configuration of the geography. Uh, and I think that's been addressed as well. So I would, uh, I'm ready to make a motion if that's.
Okay. I'll accept the motion.
So I move that we approve application 2024-00859 CU-MSP-V based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law and the testimony that we've heard this evening.
To do the revised findings that the staff mentioned?
Oh, here.
Oh, were there, were there revised findings?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, so we.
The additional, I think, 100, 150 foot.
Based on that, then I would, my motion would be to, uh, approve it, but table it to, uh, what date did you want it table to?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I guess I can defer to legal counsel. We have, we have seen you approve with an added condition. I was just, you'd have to determine if you'd want to add the, the proposed condition language as part of your motion, not necessarily table for revised findings, but utilize the findings that have been prepared and add that condition.
Add the staff's recommendation. I don't need to read it, do I?
I don't think so.
Cause I can't read it from here, but.
It's right down. It's, uh, it's, uh, new condition, number 2B. Uh, can she'll submit a revised site plan depicting that the structure is a minimum 150 feet from the center line of the Kinnamore Road. Isn't that, isn't that?
Is that, that the condition you want to add?
I would add that one condition then.
So I would add that condition to the motion, not table, add that condition to the motion and approve it with that added, added condition. Is that a sufficient motion?
All right. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. You've heard the, uh, the motion and the added condition, uh, to approve the, uh, the application based on the, uh, finding of fact and with the, and the, uh, uh, application of the law and, um, with the additional condition added to it. Uh, so the question is, shall the motion pass? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Well, next to have for us, uh, I will, uh, open the public hearing on application 2024-02269 SPR premier subdivision. Uh, we'll ask the staff, Amelia, to give us a, uh, a report.
and private road application to create a four lot subdivision. The site consists of two parcels originally in the Carrico subdivision located at 8184 and 8166 South Stewart Road. The property contains 23.58 acres in the rural urban transition district. The surrounding property is agricultural and rural residential uses. The property is near the southwest Boise area and is south of Meridian city limits. The property is located within Meridian's area of city impact. The proposed subdivision will have four lots over five acres with a private road providing access to all of the lots. The northwest pipeline crosses this property and the easement is notated clearly on the plat. The preliminary plat also complies with the design standards required by our subdivision code. The project received several comments from agencies with the requested conditions of approval. Central District Health is requiring a land development application to be submitted to them for approval. Boise Project Board of Control and Boise Kuna Irrigation District stated that the property does have irrigation water rights. Ada County Highway District is requiring that the additional driveway be closed off with landscaping and fencing and that the southern boundary of the subdivision have a 30-foot no build area to accommodate the planned future roadway. Our engineer is requiring revisions to the plat to show borrowed ditches and street sign locations, as well as conditioning the private road to comply with construction standards. We received one comment from an adjacent neighbor who had some concerns over the existing berms that were built on the property previously. The neighbor states the berms were made incorrectly and the cost of fixing them would be substantial and will likely be the responsibility of the future buyer. Additionally, noxious weeds are a concern for growing on the berms. The county does not regulate landscaping on residential lots, and while the berms may pose some issue regarding slope and soil stability, if somebody wanted to build on them, ultimately it is up to the developer if they will fix the berms to better sell the lots. Noxious weeds that have become a public nuisance is regulated by the county. And if the neighbor sees them becoming a nuisance, they can request code enforcement, pay a visit to the current or future owners. Additionally, if any slope stabilization causes effects to neighboring properties, they can also contact our county engineer who can also take a look at that time. Staff is recommending approval of this project. The board is encouraged to take any testimony presented tonight into consideration before making their decision. This presentation will be known as Exhibit number 45 and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions from the board? No questions? Thank you. Uh, is the applicant here? Oh, Mr. Lakey, welcome to our committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Always good to see you. My name is Todd Lakey. I am a land use attorney with, uh, Lakey Villagas Law, address 141 East Carlton Avenue in Meridian, Idaho. And I'm here on behalf of Epic Development. And let Amelia pull up my slides here. She's pulling that up. Commissioners, I'll start, um, first by thanking Ms. Haynes for her work on this. She's done a good job, good analysis. Um, we appreciate that analysis and agree with the conditions of approval and the FCOs that have been prepared. Commissioners, this is a nice, small project. My client purchased the, the property to improve it and to, to develop it. Um, and this development will have a very low impact based on its small size. A nice, four nice, five acre lots. It's consistent and compatible with the character of the area that's out there. And I'll just hit a few high points. Uh, next slide, if you would, Amelia. So Commissioners, we're in the Meridian impact area, as noted in the staff report, and their comprehensive plan calls for low density in this location, which is three dwelling units per acre or less, so about, you know, one-third acre lots. Uh, these are five plus acre lots, which fit also with your RUT zoning in the area. So we meet the zoning ordinance requirements. The staff also noted that we meet the preliminary plat requirements in the ordinance. And next slide. So there's a little depiction, Commissioners, of the character of the area. We're the two lots under the blue star. As you can see, it's very compatible, um, with the land use pattern that exists in the area. There's a lot of essentially five acre type lots in this location. So we're very consistent, uh, with that. Our neighborhood meeting went really well. Uh, the neighbors were very supportive of doing five acre consistent lots on this site. Next slide. So that's the current site. Commissioners, previously, I think it had a conditional use permit for some type of contractor's yard or staging area, and that conditional use permit had the requirement for those berms. Um, my client's intention is to improve those berms. They can be landscaped and be an amenity as they're cleaned up and improved. You can also see kind of the surrounding character of the area with those other five acre lots and the homes that exist in the area. Uh, that, you can also see it's the smaller access road, kind of there more in the middle that runs between the two parcels is the one that we're going to be using. We're closing the other one as part of the recommendation from ACHD, so it'll just be the one in the middle. Next slide. So there's your basic layout, Commissioners, pretty simple design, um, you know, almost six acre lots. Next slide. And there's our, the concept. Um, Commissioners, um, Mr. Langston in Epic Development has been in front of you in the past. He does very nice projects. Um, and we don't have any negative responses from the agencies. We agree with their recommendations. These will be nice custom homes. Uh, next slide. And just a few examples. Um, this is in the keep subdivision. Uh, it's a Meridian city project, but, uh, nice half acre type lots and very nice homes. Be very similar CCNRs, uh, for this particular project. Next slide and last slide. Um, Commissioners, again, we agree with the conditions of approval and the analysis. We'd ask for your approval and I'd be happy to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Go ahead, Chairman. Mr. Lakey, the, uh, how close to this is Hubbard Lake?
Is what, Commissioner?
Hubbard Lake, the, our, our aquifer recharge experiment.
Oh. Um, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daly, I don't know. Uh, that might be a better question for staff.
Uh, okay. Well, my, my question relates to that in terms of, I liked your layout, which has the water feature in there, which would do some recharge as well. So have you done any analysis? Cause previously you've done analysis with Department of Water Resources in terms of water tables, et cetera. Did you do that on this property?
Um, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daly, I did not because we haven't heard any objection. Um, and, uh, again, I haven't heard any concerns about the, the aquifer. Um, we understand the well depth is, the county staff has looked at it, the wells will probably be about 300 feet in depth. But again, no concerns were expressed about the water table, so I haven't, um, done any additional analysis on top of that.
Last question, I guess this, this is staff. Do, do we know how far this is from Hubbard Lake?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it looks like from this site to the southwest towards the lake is about 5,700 feet, so just over a mile.
Okay. So it's relatively close. So my question is, in this development, cause we're, as you all know, we're doing some aquifer recharge study at, at Hubbard Lake. So when they drill those wells, would they be willing, or would you be willing to have those wells part of our, uh, recharge of Hubbard Lake, uh, monitoring the well levels?
Um, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daly, uh, perhaps if you could describe what exactly that would entail, I could get a better idea from my client.
Well, it's monitoring the wells in terms of the ebb and flow, cause we put water in Hubbard Lake during the springtime when it's, um, uh, when the water, floodwater out of the canal, they put some of the floodwater in there and it sinks into the aquifer based on, cause it's a very porous lake. Uh, and so what we're doing is we've done over the last year and a half, we have some monitoring wells around that, which we're, which we are monitoring based on the ebb and flow of the water table when we're putting water in the aquifer. And then at the end, when they finish and the lake remit, uh, goes down, the water table. So that, that's what it would be. It would be monitoring them, uh, and we have other wells out there in that area that we're doing. So this would be just addition to ones we're already using.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daly, sure. That would be fine.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Lakey.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yep.
All right. Uh, I don't have anybody, uh, here to, uh, speak to this issue. So I guess with no one else to speak, would you like to give a rebuttal to Senator Lakey?
I don't want to talk myself out of any.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Um, I will enclose the, uh, the public hearing on, um, application 2024. Do we need to add any, any documents to the, to the file?
Um, the applicant's presentation will be included as Exhibit number 46.
And your presentation?
Already included.
All right.
All right. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just based, based on my, my request and well monitored to staff, do we need anything in here to, to that, or is it sufficient that they've agreed to it at the public hearing?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, that's a good question. I don't know if legal counsel has any advice on that. I suppose you could add a condition that we.
We're not going to get legal counsel, legal advice at a public hearing. I'm sorry. So. No, we don't need to do that. We need to.
I, I, I think, I think we have sufficient.
I think that's sufficient.
Agreement. They, they've made the agreement.
We've added, we've added some documents to the file. I'm going to close the public hearing on, uh, application 2024-02269 SPR. The public hearing being closed, uh, it's now in front of the, in front of the commission for action. Is there anybody who wants to speak about it? I think it's a, it's a good project. We should just go ahead and prove it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm, I, I agree with you.
Is there a motion?
Call moved to approve application number 202402269-S-P-R Pemberley subdivision based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and the testimony heard this evening.
I'm taking the motion.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. We have another, uh, one more file up. Uh, I will open the public hearing on application, uh, 2024-02738 VAC-V Todd and Kimberly Woods. Um, we have Michelle Owens here to give us the report. Go ahead, Michelle.
What is it again? Do I not just click share?
Uh, you should be able to, so.
And then, and then what?
And then screen.
Okay.
And then, uh, let's see.
Just do entire and then pull it up?
Yeah, and it should be able to pull it up.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
No problem.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Michaela Owens, Associate Planner for Development Services. Today I'm. Today, I'm going to be presenting project 2024-02738-VAC-V, which is an application by Todd and Kimberly Woods for a variance and vacation related to two structures that are built within rural residence setbacks and easements within the Desert View Estate subdivision number three. This is the plat for Desert View Estate subdivision number three with the lot and block of the subject property highlighted there at the bottom. This slide shows an overview of the area where the site is located. The property address is 11067 West Gila Drive within the rural residential district. The property is 1.03 acres in size and contains a single family home along with accessory structures. It is considered a rural residence by our code. This slide shows a closer view of the site with the structures in question. The rural residence code allows smaller setbacks than most of the rural residential district properties. The applicants are requesting to vacate a portion of utilities, drainage and irrigation easement that is located on the western portion of their property along that western property line. During construction of an outbuilding, a new shop highlighted here in red, they discovered its proximity to their septic drain field, which is located in the center of the site. So they relocated the structure westward, which inadvertently placed it within that required 10-foot setback and easement on the western property line. The variance also applies to an existing outbuilding, their old shop, which is outlined here in yellow, which is located to the north of the shop that's under construction. Both of these are built or are being built within that western easement and setback. Just for your reference, this is the location of the septic drain field on the site. This was pulled from their central district health permit for their septic permit. So the applicants are requesting both that vacation of that easement as well as a variance to encroach the required 10-foot setback on the western property line. In order to grant the variance, three findings must be met. The first is that the variance shall not grant a right or special privilege not otherwise allowed in the base district. Staff does find that granting this variance would grant a right or special privilege that's not otherwise allowed in the base district. Other rural residences, including those that are in the Desert View Estates number three subdivision, must adhere to the required 10-foot setback and easement. There is space elsewhere on the site where the structure could have been constructed or it could have been adjusted in size to comply with the required setback. The second finding is that the variance will relieve an undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. The applicant primarily cites economic hardship as well as some site constraints, including existing irrigation controls that are located elsewhere on the property, that septic drain field that we saw on the previous slide in the center of the property, and other existing structures and easements that are on the property that limit the location of the new shop. Additionally, the new shop is influenced by the need for proximity to the existing gravel driveway on the site as the proposed use of the shop is for personal storage, including storage of vehicles. Staff does find that there is a hardship due to the site constraints. The third finding is that the variance shall not be detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare. No agency comments received have indicated that the variance would be detrimental. We've received responses from quite a few utilities, and none of them have objections to the proposed vacation. Neighboring property owners have also submitted letters of support. As mentioned, the application was transmitted to relevant agencies. There were no objections to this project, and letters of relinquishment were received from Lumen Century Link Quest, Intermountain Gas, Marathon Pipeline, Beolio and Western Water Company. Idaho Power has yet to respond, but they were sent both the notification from us and from the applicants who are trying to use the correct pathways in order to get the relinquishment letter from Idaho Power. Additionally, there were two letters of support that were received for this application. One was from the neighbor that is directly to the west and shares the property line where the easement and vacation is being requested, and there was also a neighbor that is six properties to the west that provided a letter of support. However, based on staff review, the application does not comply with Ada County Code as it grants a special privilege not otherwise afforded to rural residences in the area. Staff recommends that the board deny the request. This presentation will be added to the record as an exhibit, and I stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Yes, the, the easement that's, easement that's being vacated, what easement is it? Is it gas, elect?
It's utility drainage and irrigation, just a standard easement that we have on property line.
Okay, so there's nothing there, it's just an easement that's.
That's correct.
Another physically there.
That's correct, Commissioner, so.
Within the easement.
There, so far, we've not received any notification that anyone is utilizing that easement for any of those things at the moment.
And all those people were contacted and they didn't make any comments, negative comments about that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daly, that's correct. We've contacted as many utilities as we possibly could that may have interest in that easement, and so far, all of the letters we've received were relinquishments indicating they either are not using that easement or they don't expect to be using it.
Okay, another question.
Go ahead.
So the, clarify in my mind as well, the, the building they initially were going to build, and it was on the septic system? Yeah, go back to that map, the other map, whether you showed where, there, that one. So the, the new shop, which, which one? What, what is this variance for? I guess that's one. Clarify what this variance that we're, that are asking is for.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daly, so they are requesting, so this is more focused on where the septic is located and why they need the variance. What they're asking for is for their shop, their old one, which is outlined in yellow here, and their new shop that's under construction, which is outlined in red. Both of those are current, are constructed or are being constructed within a 10-foot setback that's on that western property line. So since they're encroaching that, they need a variance.
And the old one was built when?
That's a good question. They are, need a retroactive building permit for it. So I don't know exactly when it was built. The applicant could probably speak to that when they come up. But they needed, they now have to get a retroactive building permit and started that in 2024.
I guess it depends on the timing of when it was built, so. And, and the new one is under construction now, you said?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daly, that's correct.
So, and the one over on the right-hand side there is going to be demolished?
That's correct.
Okay, that's part of this whole process. Okay, so then my question, I, they, they will be up here, and so they'll answer my question. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Nope.
All right. Thank you. The applicant here?
Yes.
Go ahead. I don't care.
I'm a little slow, okay?
All right, we'll wait.
Got a little air cast on. I screwed up.
I beat him up. I like my story better.
All right.
Oh, Todd and Kimberly Woods, sorry.
Yeah, all right, go ahead.
For your time.
So when we started this project, well, let me go back. The old shop was started when we took an old barn down in like 1993. We started it, we stopped it, then he finished it. We ended up finishing it about 2007, 2008, we're not really sure. When he started the new shop, he started digging down, realized this was during COVID. He was too close to the septic, set it back, stopped working on it due to COVID. Started again, started the process of doing other permits. Here we are. That's all I can tell.
Well, there's a little more than that. So when I had to pull the property, the building back, sorry, because of my septic tank, septic drain field, I had to pull it back, so I went and got with my neighbor and asked if it was okay, if I can pull the building back with her and then on that. So we had to make a deal there with some drain field so I could run the, run water. She didn't want water running on her property, so I had to put in a drain field on the side of it, and then she wants a gutter on there, and I said, okay. So anyway, that is, worked it out with the neighbor, and I thought it was pretty good to go, but then when we got the other processes going, I didn't realize that all this easement and vacation and the other form, what was the other form I had to do?
Probably just a building permit.
Vacation form? So it's just been ongoing, ongoing, so now we're at the final step, I hope, so, on this, so I can finish building. Thank you.
All right, any questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
Well, my, my question is, is for staff slash applicant. So 1993, what should they have done in 19, what should he have done in 1993 then in terms of doing what he did in terms of, should he, based on the ordinance then, gotten a variance? For the building that's, the old building that's there, built it in 1993, completed it in 2007, 2008, and it's, it's outside of the, it, it, there's a variance, we're requesting a variance for that too, correct?
That's correct. They are requesting a variance for that now, so that's going to get it in line. I think at the time, it's only 910 square feet, but it's not an agricultural structure, so I don't think there was an exemption. They would have needed either a zoning certificate or a building permit at the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Those are my own questions. All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Oh, then the other thing I would like to say is Idaho Power, we did pay for that. They wanted, they wanted a check, it was a hundred and fifty bucks. And so they paid it, and I had to go down to the bank and do a certified letter and send it to them, so I don't know why they didn't respond back, so, on that.
Well, they got their money, apparently.
Oh, they got my money. Thank you.
All right. Okay, is there's, there's no one else here to speak to it? And do you need to include anything in the record?
Mr. Chair, nope, I already added my presentation.
Okay, good enough. I'll close the public hearing on application 2024-02738-VAC-V, Todd and Kimberly Woods. Okay, now it's in front of us for, the, the question is, shall we grant the variance? I think our staff has already said that they met two of the three requirements, but the one they didn't meet was that it, it, it doesn't seem in some of the rural areas that this type of variance has been granted. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, I can't speak to where it's been granted before. We're recommending that it is not granted because it grants a right or special privilege that other rural residences, including in this neighborhood, are not allowed under code.
Well, that's what I said. Okay. Okay, so that, so that is the issue in front of us. All right. All right, so what's, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, it, it basically is in a neighborhood where nobody's complained. I, I, I'm inclined to support the, the variances that they've requested based on what we've discussed and what the situation is.
Okay, is there any, any other comments?
I would concur.
Okay, so if we're going to prove this, we'll need to get some revised findings of fact, will we not?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that's correct. Yeah, and we would recommend if, if you vote to approve, that you table to the March 25th open business meeting.
Okay, well, I'll accept the motion then. Go ahead.
I move that we approve application 2024-02738-VAC-V and table it to the March 25th business meeting to have, to, for the staff to compile revised findings of fact and conclusions of the law based on the discussion we've had tonight.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
For the motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Do we have any other business we need to conduct this evening?
Nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
I will be adjourned. We are adjourned. Thank you.